I want to put my hand in the air.
Lord, we just go to you tonight to seeking your wisdom, Lord. And, Lord, we have so much to be thankful for in our lives and the country that we live in and the freedoms that we have and enjoy, Lord. We just thank you for blessing us. Ask your name. Amen.
Amen.
Hello? She wanted to pledge?
Sure.
Wait, we gotta be, we gotta...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not trying to be quiet. That's how we write it up, too. Call a meeting to order for November 17th, 2022. Ms. Nancy, will you call roll?
Sure. Chris Foster?
Here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Jim Adams?
Here.
Lane Tubbs?
Here.
Melissa Cho?
Here.
Ally Sugg?
Here.
James Lay?
Here.
Sharon Williams?
Here.
Rebecca Prince?
Here.
The press. Mayor Griffin?
Here.
Luther Rucker, shall we have a forum? Okay, let's get started. First, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from October 20th, 2022, City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Abstain.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Abstain.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to approve the payments journal from October 1st to October 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to approve the Street Fund Financial Statement, Sanitation, General Fund, Community Center, O&amp;M, and Miscellaneous Funds dated October 31, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Was that Lane, the second?
Louis.
No, Louis.
Louis.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Cho?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. You have your supervisor reports, and we have Scott and David here. Do you guys have any questions for them? Okay. I'm gonna let Clint Bell come up and give us an update on our projects.
I'll update on the trails, the stormwater, and then sidewalk project. So, Sulphur Creek Trail is Phase One. As y'all know, it's under construction. That is progressing very well and on schedule. Contractor has completed pretty much all the shell base work that was needed on that from Scott Street all the way out past Biddle. Project looks great. Y'all should go out and check it out. He's working on installing the gravel, and as of yesterday afternoon, he had about 40 loads left. That was gonna take him from behind Julian Woodworking in there all the way to Scott Street. So that's the only part that they have left. When they get all the gravel in, they'll be ready to asphalt that section. So they're gonna asphalt from Scott Street to Biddle Road, so up to the bridge, and then from the bridge on to Biddle Road, and that will be a completed trail from Scott all the way out to Biddle. He's waiting on the Biddle section, west of Biddle, because the bridge won't be in until January the 6th. When he places the bridge, then he'll go ahead and do all the asphalt work associated with that. He doesn't want to mess up any of the new asphalt work by placing the bridge. So, it's a big bridge, gotta have some cranes, some big equipment to get it in there, so we don't wanna make any damage to some brand-new asphalt. So, we're gonna place the bridge, then we'll pave the rest of it. So, it really looks good. Y'all should go check it out. Those pictures really don't do it justice, but walked a big section of it yesterday, and it's coming along. It's very well-constructed, has a good shell base, six to eight inches of gravel, depending on what we were laying on, and it'll have two and a half inches of asphalt over the top. So this'll be with us for a while, and I appreciate you guys in giving a budget large enough to do the trail correctly, because I think that's so important today that, you know, we're gonna expend the funds, that they last a long time. So, I appreciate that and look forward to doing Phase Two. So on Phase Two, the...
Wait, wait, wait. Yes, ma'am? If you're going to go with the trail, where do you think to park?
Probably the best place, Fairgrounds is a good place to park, and you can access both sides, so...
Okay.
Running west of Biddle, you can access right there from the Fairgrounds, and running east into town, you can access. The other place would be at 11th Street, where it just kinda turns back to Cross, I think that is, just past Scott Street, kinda dives down in there, you can park right there and walk it.
Okay.
That'd be a great place to park and walk to the bridge, so...
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, just follow 11th all the way down to where it pretty much dead ends, and you can pull into the woods right there. There's a little parking area, so... And that's a good place to start your walk, and walk to the bridge and see a really pretty section of the trail, so. All of this from Scott Street out past Biddle, it's beautiful right now. It's got leaves, and, I mean, it's very picturesque, so I would encourage all y'all to go check it out.
Bridge?
Bridge is awesome, yes. And they did rework, so part of this project, we're reworking culverts, drainage, we did some rock head walls, some of the stuff that we'd seen a little damage on from the original installation, we've reworked a lot of that, including the bridge abutments. We really kinda straightened those up, so it's looking good. It's gonna be in good shape very soon, so. So moving into Phase Two, we're finalizing the easements on that. We've got one in hand, two variables, that we just need to get in hand and finish the routing. There's been some changes and some back-and-forths on the easements with the routing and finalizing that for the Phase Two section, and we're still designing the underpass area at the bypass and coordinating that with RDOT. So we got a little section, we're coming under the bypass and turning and running in the right-of-way of RDOT, so all that has to be approved by RDOT. So, that's kinda held us up a little bit, but that's one of the reasons we broke it into two phases. We knew this phase would take a little longer to get approved, so this also includes the Corps of Engineers section. We have been approved for that, we have everything in writing. The final plans on this, I'm hoping to be complete by first of the year. That will be dependent on how fast RDOT can turn around the review and approval, and if there's a lot of back-and-forth or any corrections that they have.
Yes, sir.
What's the underpass?
Under the bypass, right by the syrup plant. It's just a bridge right now, it's not an underpass. We're gonna make it in an underpass for the bicycles.
Okay, so is that the same place that goes into that vacant lot that's right there, by where Gashau used to live?
No, this is, you know, South Ridge and the syrup plant?
Yes.
And you're driving over the bypass, that bridge right there?
Okay.
It would come under there, where Sulphur Creek crosses and runs right next to the syrup plant between South Ridge Village and syrup plant.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
So that's where we're gonna, we'll have a bridge that crosses Sulphur Creek, and then we'll immediately take the underpass. We'll go under that bridge for the highway to get across the highway. That's the plan. That has been tentatively approved by RDOT, so... And then, well, then we'll just kinda tie on the, we'll hold right by the highway there, so... You bet. And then on the back is the stormwater update, so Main Street improvements, the plan and profile layout is complete on that. Been working with Fisher Arnold on the hydraulic model for Third Street and Fifth Street. As y'all know, we're trying to size this for a certain storm event, 25-year storm event. This area, Third Street especially, gets a lot of flow. Those of y'all who have seen it, you know, it overtops Main Street, it's been pretty heavy over Main Street. So modeling that has been very challenging. There's large flows, and it's a complex drainage area. So, the inlet design, we're working on that to make sure, there's a lot of flow that comes down from First Baptist, that double-lane road through there, and capturing all that flow before it crosses Main Street is where we're working to get our inlets right and the boxes right. So, it's been a pretty complicated and challenging design effort on that, so it's taking a little longer than I anticipated, but we're getting very close now. So, I hope to be finished with that and out for bid, hopefully in spring of 2023, construction and finishing up the end of this year. So, that one also has some RDOT approval associated with it. You know, they're gonna share the portion that actually crosses Main Street, they're gonna construct the box, so when we get our model complete and our H&amp;H study, we'll compare it to theirs. They're simultaneously doing the same thing right now, hydraulic analysis, and so we'll compare the two, and hopefully we come with a very similar-sized structure. They're sometimes a little more conservative, so theirs may be a little bigger than what we'd sized, so... But we'll coordinate that with our design, tie it to both ends of their construction, Third Street is gonna be a little higher than my original estimate because of some of these inlets and the size of the boxes, and just the construction costs has went up a little bit, but I do think Fifth Street is gonna be a little lower with the modeling efforts. It's a little smaller pipe than what we originally estimated, so we may see a little cost savings there. I'm hoping that we're still very much in the same budget area. If we're not, where I've got some design flexibility is the tail end of Third Street. We're hoping to do some channelization, Hyndereau Building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go on down to that.
Yeah. Channelize that and actually concrete that. If money runs short, that would be my first place to just, instead of concreting that channel, just cleaning it out and making sure it carries the flow, but it may not be concrete. So, just to let y'all know, if money does get tight, that would be where we cut it. Highway 25 improvements, the design on that is complete. We've got several easements we're crossing that we need to get on that one, so working on that, and then we'll finalize the details and specifications and hopefully bid that out. I would really like to bid Main Street first before we even do Highway 25, just to see the budget numbers.
Did you do that January?
Yes, January, hoping for like a spring construction timeframe, so. Sidewalk, Weddingford Sidewalk, the plan and profile is complete on that. We have submitted that to RDOT. As soon as we get approval, we should be ready to bid that one, so that design is complete. It's just awaiting approval at RDOT. There's a lot of turnover at some of these state agencies. I think Weddingford's been in like two or three different hands already, and they've only had it for a month. We've had two or three different contacts that have touched base with us, so that's one of the things that takes a little time, but hopefully that'll happen pretty quick and we'll get approval on that. So as soon as we get approval, we're ready to roll, and Weddingford will put it out for bid, so. I would be glad to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank y'all.
This is so helpful.
All right, new business, we have a rezoning ordinance. Oh, in fact, I might have to have you read this language.
I'll do it.
What is the ordinance number?
Nancy, what's the ordinance number gonna be?
B.
Do we want it numbered, or are we gonna read it for three different meetings or one meeting?
Oh, good question. I'm gonna read it for...
I think if it's a change of...
There's not an emergency clause, though.
Sounding ordinances, I thought we had to read three times.
You will. I'm gonna ask him, because it gets our numbers out of whack when we have one that passes right behind it, and I've got a different number. So if we could, if we're gonna do it on three different meetings, I'd like to do the number at the last meeting when we finally pass the ordinance, or if we're gonna do all three readings today, it's 2011.
Okay. Well, let's do three different meetings, and I will read it for the first time today. An ordinance amending the zoning map attached there to and for other purposes, whereas the zoning map of the city of Heber Springs classified as residential zone R1. The following described real property to wit a part of the south half of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 12, Township 10 North, Range 10 West, more particularly describes beginning at an aluminum monument for the southeast corner of said south half, northeast quarter, northeast quarter, thence along the east boundary of said south half, northeast quarter, northeast quarter, north 0 degrees 02 minutes 48 seconds east 130.79 feet to an iron pen, and said point being the point of beginning, thence leaving said east boundary north 850905 west 1171.30 to an iron pen, thence north 010843 east 523.98 feet, then south 845708 east 1170.67 feet to an iron pen on said east boundary, thence along said east boundary south 010248 west 519.96 feet to the point of beginning, containing 14 acres more or less, all in Cleveland County, Arkansas, subject to the right-of-way of Rock Products Road. A clear zone easement is filed in Book 129, pages 384 through 385, in the Circuit Clerk's Office. Cleveland County, Arkansas, and any and all other easements or restrictions of record, and that is less than except the park commencing at an aluminum monument for the southeast corner of said south half of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of said Section 12, thence along the east boundary of said south half of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter, north 000244 east, a distance of 130.79 feet to the point of beginning, thence leaving said east boundary north 850119 west, a distance of 486.25 feet, thence north 53, 5923 east, a distance of 609.45 feet to the east boundary of said south half of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter, thence along said east boundary south 011336 west, a distance of 400.60 feet to the point of beginning, containing 2.23 acres more or less. Whereas, a petition has been filed with the city of Heber Springs Planning and Zoning Commission for a zoning, a rezoning of real property from residential zone R1 to commercial zone C2, and whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, having conducted a public hearing after giving notice as required by law and having approved said petition and recommended to the city council the rezoning of said land, and city council having reviewed the saying, has determined that it would be in the best interest of the city of Heber Springs and its inhabitants if property, if said property be rezoned as requested. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Heber Springs as follows, that this ordinance and the zoning map of the city of Heber Springs, Arkansas, being it is hereby amended to show that the above-described real property is reclassified from residential zone R1 to commercial zone C2 for the consideration and upon the conditions herein above set out in Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
And what is going in, framed there? For change in commercial?
Done. Done.
And where exactly is this? I know that was a really great description.
This property is located just to the north of the east end of the runway. We took a section of it in the RPZ. There's nothing really can be built on it from water. There's no water, there's no sewer. There is water outside, but it's not cost-effective to get on the property. So, doing any kind of residential structural work is gonna be not feasible. The owners of the property have looked to sell it, and the buyer is wanting to put a, just a metal building to store his RV, jet skis, toys, for when he comes to the lake. He's got it, it's gonna be well off of the road, it's gonna be blocked in, but it does also offer the fact that if somebody ever wanted to, they could build hangar that would access the airport, because it does run that north boundary.
But if we put it on commercial, or if we change it to commercial, he can just put a storage building up?
Yes, it'll have, it'll work just like a regular building. It'll have the facade put on it, it'll have, it has to meet certain criteria of planning and zoning paths. It still has to go before planning and zoning for a site plan approval, because it is commercial. Residentially, it would not. They could just come back in and would look at the plans, make sure that they're within their rights, I guess, from issuing their permits, and then we'd go on our way. But because it's commercial, we're going residential to commercial, commercial is really the only thing that's gonna work on this property. Residentially, we don't allow accessory structures on the property. With commercial, we can put a building, necessarily be called accessory structure, but we actually have control over what it looks like. It's gotta have facade, it's gotta have, it's gotta be located, it's gotta have drives, it's gotta, I mean, there's criteria that we have, that we put on there, and I say "we" as planning and zoning. This is nothing, this zoning isn't anything like what the last zoning was with Whitney Bond. They were planning to use, that was a business, that was the reason we done it, was to put the business in there. This is not got a business attached to it, it's not gonna have a business attached to it, it's just gonna be a storage building, basically, for toys. But could be a business at future date? Not likely, because most businesses would require to have utilities. They'll have power, but they will not have water, they will not have sewer. Putting water to it is gonna be the big issue. Just commercially, if you put a business in, you're required to have public restaurants. To have public restaurants, you have to have water. 20 years down the road, it could be a business. It could, yes. It could be a hangar, it could be, it could be rezoned back to residential.
And it's just two and a half acres?
No.
No, it's 11, it's 11-acre track.
Oh, and same owner?
Yes. The only, there's gonna be a little section of property between this, which y'all are voting on, and Aroma Teaks. Aroma Teaks is commercial, but there'll be one little section that will be residential between the two, but it all runs to the back of the, straight along to the back of the airport. Yeah. When we took the frontage off of Rock Products or the RPZ on that corner, it did cut the entrance to that property way down, because they cut, like I said, they cut the whole corner off of it. So, that's why everything has to be moved back into the property and not put up on the road. There's no, there's not enough room to put up on the road.
So this is kinda like behind that little subdivision up there at the end, and Aroma Teak, and that's where it is?
Yeah, it's rock, it's behind Rocky Ridge, between Rocky Ridge and the airport.
And the little...
And then it goes from Rock Products all the way to the backside of Aroma Teak.
Gotcha.
Along the, along the fence. The airport actually looked behind this, tried to buy this before.
So...
Would it not be a good commercial selling?
Dead end area.
Yeah. It's kinda bound on all sides, isn't it? Looks like trees.
Mm-hmm. Soon to be a toy storage.
Okay. So we gotta do the three separate readings, three separate things?
Yeah.
So we don't go over any... Not tonight.
Cool.
Thank you.
Reading number one down.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the interlocal agreement for county dispatch.
Do you have a vote on this rezoning?
Not yet. We have to read it two more times.
Not until January.
At future meetings. Not tonight.
Okay, so you can't dispense with the second, third reading?
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you.
With this agreement, I know there's the percentage on there, but there's no dollar amount. Does that fluctuate?
Did you get the last paid? Oh.
Yeah, there's no dollar.
Oh, it's on our back. So for, and there's not a dollar amount. It's $88,000. Brian, do you have that number?
No, ma'am, I thought you had it.
Well, I thought I did, too. I can bring it up. I set the wrong.
And it's for two years. It's $88,000. Excuse me, $741.38.
Eighty-eight thousand what?
And this is a two-year agreement?
What would we have to pay before?
Last year, we paid $100,000.
Neither. So this worked out about like you thought it was going to?
It did less.
And I will say that I have discussed this with other jurisdictions outside of Cleveland County, and I was surprised because they wouldn't be...
I think this is a similar formula that is used in Stone County, am I right?
I do, so, but I know primarily White County, who I've spoken with, the Cersei TD, Ball House, some of those, there's different matters.
Van Buren County was shocked that we would have to pay this, so... That you would have, that we would have to pay it. Yeah, that we would pay so much, so... Less than what we paid in the future rate, and it is a... Well, but it doesn't include jail. I mean, less than what we paid in the past, is what I'm saying. Yeah, I mean, they could always come back and ask us to pay for jail, too.
Right, amen, ma'am.
And then that could, then we would be paying more.
Right, but it's gonna be a little bit before that happens, before we pay for inmates. Is that what you're saying?
Because they're not housing.
Right.
Yeah, we know that for sure.
They're housing very few.
Well, they're not housing anybody, so... They're not holding prisoners right now that qualify for us to have the charges, so... So what's your forethought on that? I mean, is it, what do they act like when you're talking to them about that, when they do start housing? I think that there's gonna have to be a discussion between everybody on tax increase for a new jail facility before that, other committees debating, have those discussions, so...
Okay.
But they're talking about years down the road. So they're not gonna house anybody for years? We're still, you said in Miss Tewa County? They have done some expenditures and adjusted some of the cell blocks so that they could get 12 more inmates in that jail.
But they're gonna have to be felons.
And it done some reclassification to that facility so that it actually didn't help with some misdemeanors, but more of the long-term faults, so it's a mess, but it's a mess everywhere. Yeah. So everything's going to Cersei or White County right now?
Or they...
No, certainly, not everything.
Wherever jail's gonna hold it.
White County's asking down on jail employees so that they can hold the maximum amount of inmates, so...
And Brian's right. We, in my line of work, we've had to call 15, 20 different counties, and nobody would hold, so we're definitely not alone.
I'll say this, I had a conversation...
I, I'll say this, uh, I had a conversation with Sheriff, uh, Miller, and, uh, he said we would almost be better off for Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, give me all their employees, and we could run max capacity of you. But then we get into, it's gonna cost us seventy bucks for every transport, you know, by time fuel and everything figured in, so. It's, it's gotta be resolved here.
Correct.
What was the?
So what you're saying is we don't have to worry about a jail for at least the duration of this contract?
I'll tell you what the sheriff has told me. It is, it's kinda like the former court situation with dispatch. Uh, they hold that power now, Cleveland County's office. There's no art for that. Uh, there's only debate over how much you're gonna spend, uh, for your services, not for nine-one-one, but for what they do for you. Like, Searcy T D is gonna keep two dispatches, it's gonna cost them probably seventy, eighty thousand dollars right there just to do the in-house stuff that is required through all the warrants, that type of thing.
I would be okay if it was the twenty-seven point eight-six percent of the population that Heber Springs is in county. Uh, my problem is, is them saying that we're the most calls, because obviously Heber is gonna be the most calls, because everybody comes here to go to Walmart. Everybody, not everybody, but a majority of Cleveland County people come to Heber Springs to work, so this is where most of the fender benders happen, and, you know, uh, so those calls are gonna come from Heber Springs. So, I just feel like we're being penalized because of that, and we're having to tax our people twice. I mean, if it was the, like I said, if it was based on the population and Heber Springs residents being the twenty-seven point eight-six percent, I could see that, but to say, no, most of the calls come from Heber, so we're gonna charge you that amount, I don't, I don't think that's fair.
And ultimately, everyone pays it, even people in, that live in the county, because we're all paying sales tax that supports the city and the county and the state every time we shop in Heber, so I see Ms. Suck's point.
All these issues started at the state level, uh, two years ago, so.
But I think the whole point that Governor Hutchinson was trying to do was have better communication and organization and reduce expenses for all of the, I know the P S A, I read about that, and, and that was my understanding, that the whole point of it was better communication, you know, between different counties and, you know, reducing the number of nine-one-one dispatch was, that was the whole plan for the state. That was my understanding.
Didn't we operate this at about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars less than they do?
We, we operated, it was three hu, our budget was three hundred and thirty thousand. They took it over, and within a year, their budget was like four fifty, so.
And they get four forty from the state, or four eighty from the state?
Yeah.
I'd like that they're all just a little bit, I'd like the state to have fifty thousand.
So they're getting four hundred? They're getting four hundred?
Yes, or some, somewhere in that ballpark.
Plus our, plus another eighty-eight from us?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, and all the other towns, you got the little three, two, three, one, four, five percent?
None of them have to pay.
They don't have to pay at all?
Cause they're three percent.
They're under, they're under percent.
It's not enough for them to. With the three percent that they put in there in leeway, it is, it's causing equipment and contour not that big.
So do we have options?
County covers that, county's keeping that part of it.
There's options, but they're not good.
Yeah, not good options.
Women have third thoughts.
So it's, yep, so it's twelve thousand dollars less than what we've paid in the past?
Mm-hmm.
Still stuff we shouldn't be paying.
Was twelve thousand less than we paid in the past, not what they wanted in the past.
Right, right. It's true.
So what would Plan B be? I mean, we don't, there's not really another option, sir?
We lock him up inside Casey's office?
Um, that's an option.
What you think, Brian? Oh, they were talking about locking up Casey's office?
I said no.
I just said there's not really a good option on the other, there's no good Plan B, you know, plus you wanna absorb, you take the cost of it.
I, I mean, if, if the city wants to get into the, the, that side of it, it's about, it's gonna cost us three hundred thousand dollars. And so we gotta weigh eighty-eight thousand as opposed to three hundred thousand. We could, uh, nine-one-one calls would come in and get transferred to the Heber Springs Police Department, and I would have to have
More staff.
A minimum of five employees there to take those calls, because they're dealing with non-emergency stuff as well.
So, Ally, under your thought process there, I mean, do we, can we go back to them with anything else, or just, we take this?
I mean, I don't know, I mean, cause, I mean, that's just me looking at this. I mean, to me, it would make sense to pay the twenty-seven, or even thirty percent, you know, of their, their shortfall. So, I, I don't, I just don't get how, I, I don't feel like we should be punished, because most of the calls come from inside Heber Springs when, you know, people who live in Gruceberry Equipment, they work in Heber, they come to Heber to shop, you know, to go to Walmart. It's not, we're, we're being punished because of that.
Well, and it's not just nine-one-one calls either. It's every, it's all the dispatching that they do for everybody.
Okay, so Van Buren County charges a thousand dollars a month to Fairfield Bay, to, you know, to the other cities to just dispatch like that. I, I mean, twelve thousand dollars a month, or a year doesn't.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you look at system usage, I think you're missing that. Hold on. We're forty-five percent of system usage.
Yeah, I'm not missing the point. I get that.
But most people come to Heber to work, to shop, to, to do business.
People that live in the county come to Heber, and just cause they, this is where they're gonna get in, uh, fender bender at Walmart at, or whatever, but like, just because, you know, they're calling from inside Heber, and that's where the call is coming from, that's what they're basing this on.
My question is, if you have eighty-eight thousand dollars coming in, and they don't spend that, do we get it back?
We're still in Cleveland County.
Or does it roll over into?
We're, we're, we're gonna be pocketing, we're gonna be padding their pockets for a little bit, but we still have to do, we have to have something, like Brian said, we're looking at three hundred grand.
Well, they, they spend their money at Walmart, we get the sales tax, so we've gotta pay to give them services, to protect them.
But they're already paying for their dispatch on their cellphone bill.
No, they're only paying for nine-one-one.
Are they not calling nine-one-one?
No, that, that, that's, like, we had a hundred and twenty-seven fire calls last month. Dispatch a hundred and twenty-seven times for fire. And that also goes, like, was a, it's a survival flight, and then all of our P D calls as well, right?
Yes. I think I sent you sent out a, um, sheet that had all of the calls broken down.
You did.
Did you? Oh, y'all got that? But, I mean, you can see the breakdown is clear on, on that, and, uh, so that's, that's where they come up with these numbers.
I mean, I'm not saying the numbers are wrong, I just don't think we should pay on the numbers. I think we should pay on population. So, cause we're all Cleveland County residents.
I, I guess mine would be.
It's not just for si, we're, we're, I think what she's trying to say is it's not just about city residents, it's about the whole county. It just seems like we're double-dipping, to me.
Because they already get paid from the state to handle it.
They're getting paid from the state, and when, when the city is paying the county extra based on usage as opposed to population, that, that's fuzzy, because everyone's coming in and doing business in Heber. That's, I think that's what she's trying to say.
Yeah.
And they're taxed on cell phones?
Yes, that pays for the nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one.
That's it.
That's when this all began. When, when that tax.
So, that's why we're saying we're dou, we're double dipping, because they're already getting taxed.
Took over.
Double taxation.
They made that decision. We made that decision with them, was my opinion, so.
I just don't know why we have to pay when they're already being paid to do it.
Because the overage, they're only charging for the overage.
It's separate from nine-one-one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but there is a separation. I, I mean, they're, they're, they're tracking our warrants and all that other information and our officers.
So you don't think thirty thousand dollars a year should cover that?
And Heber Springs, or Cleveland County Dispatch, it used to be, I'm guessing it still is, one of the only counties in the state that does everything? Enters warrants, deletes warrants, confirms warrants. Is that still accurate?
We still have trackups, though.
Right.
The, the warrants at our office.
Right.
We only send a copy.
Right, but I'm just saying, as far as dispatch, they still, do they still enter that, or is that done by?
Yes, dispatching.
So, yeah, so we, I mean, so we're a significant portion of it.
That's what you're paying for.
Right.
Those type of things. Keep it up with our officers. That's, that's what you're paying them for.
There's a lot more to.
They're going after some major amount of money over the actual nine-one-one call, okay?
Their, their services.
I knew it is, as a per, as a percentage across the board, you're paying them not only for the warrants, for the, the tracking of the officers that are on shift, and the non-emergencies stuff. So, you know, you've got several things there that have to be taken into consideration. We can debate that, I guess. I don't know that that's.
The long and the short of it is, if we don't like it, the alternative is we handle it ourselves.
We can hammer on dispatch.
Well, we have that. You can also change court and court out in the camp of judge if you don't like it. So vote.
I, I'm not saying we don't pay anything. I just, I feel like we should be paying thirty thousand instead of ninety thousand.
And if you want to voice that in the form of order.
Well, I think, I think we should pay it. It keeps our officer safe and does all the things that needs to be done. I wish it was less, but they have a formula to show us why we're paying for what we're paying.
I, I think that this all, all stems from, we never had anything to hold, and so when they, they come up with this form, whether it's right or wrong, at least it was starting from a hundred and thirty thousand, and then some.
I mean, we're going the right direction. It's getting.
Deal on building, or, or whatever, the case might have been.
But this is a two-year agreement. So you're saying you agree with this formula?
Yeah.
I mean, we can opt out in six months' notice, so either side can terminate this within six months.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then we'll be.
Brian, do you have any idea why they decided to cancel our interlocal to start with?
It had, and, so that they could come up with this new one, but by January.
They, they had to give us six month notice.
Have to give us six month.
Do we need to read this and then go through and do it?
Forty-five percent usage is what this is all based on, right?
For the city's favor.
Is there a way to differentiate who those call, what to, or whether they were actual Heber Springs residents?
Yes, I remember that.
Okay, so that forty-five percent is actual Heber Springs residents?
No.
No, it's just calls within.
Heber Springs call.
Oh, I understand.
It's yours, they would.
I understand that, but if you've got a resident that actually lives in Heber and they call, and it dispatches you for them, that's different from somebody that lives at, well, for a Drasco, and is in Heber and dispatch.
Correct.
That's, that's.
That's what she's trying to say, yes.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what I'm saying. How can, can you determine out of that forty-five percent, how many of those residents, how many of those were actual residents?
Well, how many, how many, I, I would have to do some serious looking, but how many, how many non-residents of Cleveland County do, does the city of Heber Springs deal with?
True, because you've got people who come in.
You start breaking it down that way, it's gonna get wild.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think this is fair. I know it sucks, but I think it's fair.
I don't think it's fair. It shouldn't be based on usage.
I think we can dig our heels in.
It shouldn't be based on usage, it should be based on population.
It should be based on population, not usage, is what Ally was trying to say.
I, I agree. I mean, I agree. There's probably another way to do this, but.
I think, I think we need to read the ordinance and then, then allow the council to bow.
Okay, here's a way I look at it, too. Here's a way I look at it, too. We're a lot of the usage, but supposedly, we also should be benefiting from a lot of the taxes, cause you could say half of these are probably the weekends, right? But supposedly, we should be getting taxes from them as well, cause they're coming in shopping at Walmart and downtown and all that other stuff, too. So, we can, I understand what you're pointing, a hundred percent. Part of it is like, I mean, we can cut our nose off to spite our face, too, pay three hundred thousand and say we won. I, I don't think it's.
So there's no negotiating at all?
If you can drive up.
We've tried that before.
I don't, I don't know that this is the fight we wanna fight.
No, we didn't negotiate, we just didn't pay it. That wasn't the way to.
I just don't think it's the fight we wanna fight, though. I don't, this, this is not the one to dig in on, I don't, I don't think.
I agree. Would you like to read the ordinance for us?
Uh, I guess.
What is the number?
Now, it's, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash eleven.
Dash what?
Eleven, twenty-twenty-two dash eleven.
But that eighty-eight thousand is for this year?
Correct.
So for.
Well, for twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, so for next year.
It might be different.
It might be different.
Depending on usage.
And then we won't know.
This, this begins January first, twenty-three, and ends December thirty-first, or twenty-four, so it's.
So eighty-eight thousand for two years?
For a year.
For a year, that's for a year.
Yeah, that's right.
That's what I'm saying. So are they gonna tell us in July how much it'll be for twenty-four, so we can let them know six months out whether we're gonna count, cancel or not?
They, they will be able to give you a more accurate count next year as July or whatever comes up, CA, that is, should be online. It's actually online now, but, uh, those numbers will be.
Accurate next year.
Yeah, definitely a lot more possible. I think I spoke about this before, but, I mean, we'll be able to look at CAD numbers and our R P S numbers maybe to decide whether we need officers in the future, uh, because we we do have a lot of people that outside the state that are here, so.
Okay, so, do, do you want the, the interlocal?
You can just read the ordinance.
Just the ordinance, okay. So it's ordinance number, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash eleven. An ordinance authorizing and approving an interlocal cooperative agreement between Cleveland County and the City of Heber Springs regarding dispatching services declared in emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council of Heber, City of Heber Springs, Arkansas recognizes its obligation to provide dispatching services. Whereas the City Council of Heber Springs acknowledges it has limited financial resources with which to provide said cert, dispatching services, whereas the city is desirous of entering into an interlocal cooperative agreement with this county where the intent of the agreement is to establish perpetual agreement whereby the city will provide revenues to the county which will in turn use such revenues coupled with the county's own revenue to provide dispatching services. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the He, City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute on behalf of the city the interlocal cooperative agreement attached here unto as Exhibit A, whereby the city will provide revenues to the county which will in turn use such revenues coupled with the county's own revenues to provide dispatching services. Emergency clause, the need to provide a consistent dispatching service in the City of Heber Springs in order to protect the public peace, health, safety, and welfare is deemed by the city to be an emergency, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after. peace, health, safety and welfare is deemed by the city to be an emergency and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage. Past this seventeenth day of November twenty twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
I've, I've got a question on the, the agreement itself. I know it's been a six-month leeway, you know, I had noticed, but is that in that still? I may have overlooked it.
In the agreement?
Right, in the agreement itself.
Yeah, yeah. It is.
It is in there still?
Yes.
Okay, I just overlooked it then.
Has Gris very signed? Has Gris very approved? Oh, I don't know.
They don't have to pay anything.
I think, yeah, they do a little, a little bit, like point seven five or point two five.
Point seven five.
So anybody that's over three percent has to pay a touch?
Yeah.
Six months. I move we place the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Second then.
Nancy?
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eleven. An ordinance authorizing and approving an interlocal cooperative agreement between Clever County and the City of Heber Springs regarding dispatching services declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'm going to replace it on third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Nancy?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Third reading ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eleven. An ordinance authorizing and approving the, an interlocal agreement, an interlocal cooperative agreement between Clever County and the City of Heber Springs regarding dispatching services declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I move we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
James Lay?
Reluctant, yes.
Ally Sugg?
No.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
No.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next we have.
We gotta do the emergency clause.
Oh, sorry.
I move to adopt the emergency clause.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
No.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
No.
James Lay?
Reluctant, yes again.
Motion carried. Okay, next we have an invoice for the architect for the municipal building. It's for six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
That we're redoing again? That we're redoing again?
Oh, yeah. Redone it like three times. Keep moving it around.
So we're getting another one for redoing again?
No. They're just charging us like a percentage of the work as they go. I mean, they have a full amount, but it's.
Yeah.
Because we doesn't, we don't have those funds allocated. Those opera funds allocated.
Is this the first fund?
This is the second.
Second.
How much we paying the first time?
Seventy-seven hundred. So I just need a motion to approve the payment.
For the sixty-one sixty?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Next, we need to add Mr. Zeke Wilson as a check signer. Can I get a motion to add Mr. Wilson?
I make a motion we add him.
A second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we need to remove Ms. Nancy Hurley as a check signer as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Get her out of there.
Get out of here.
No problem.
We say that with love. So does she.
That's what I say. It's all.
I'll make a motion we remove her.
Hey, she put this on here, okay?
I guess, I guess.
Second. I'm sorry, who is second?
Melissa.
I'll second. Thank you. I guess.
Any discussion?
Can't just leave her on there.
Ms. Nancy?
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
And then we'll wait till January?
Motion carried.
To add Vicki.
She hasn't, yes, she has to.
We have to wait till January? Sure. Okay, next up, we've got the SRO contract for the school resource officer.
Did we figure out who that's gonna be yet?
Yeah, but it's gonna be a little bit. I'm sure Brian can answer any questions for this contract.
Probably go and read it.
No. We don't have to read it.
Who reads it?
It's a contract. It's just a contract. So I just need your blessing to sign the contract.
Is, is this the same contract or did they end up changing a bunch of things?
It's the same. The only thing that changed was the fee schedule really, right?
Our, our fiscal, uh, year.
Yes.
Schools are different, six months off, so, um, the SRO has got paid degrees through the school district. And we need today, so it's, it's changing as well as, I believe, drops.
We, we drop them.
On the compound.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Other than that, it's the same.
Good with it.
So exhibit A reflects their new reality.
I'm sorry, sir.
Exhibit A reflects the new reality of their pay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
Can I ask you a second?
Me. Melissa.
Adams and Melissa.
James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, next up is our sanitation, um, billing increase. And this is gonna be a little lengthy.
You should have read it.
It's an ordinance, so someone needs to read it.
I will.
Thank you, sir. Get ready.
Twelve? All right. Sanitation ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve. An ordinance revising and updating provisions of the Heber Springs Municipal Code Title V, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 5.16, Solid Waste Collection and for Other Purposes. Whereas the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed this ordinance with regards to commercial and residential sanitation operations. Whereas the City Council has determined that it is best interest to the city, its citizens, residents to revise and update such ordinance. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas, as follows. Section one, the following provisions of the Heber Springs Municipal Code Title V, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 5.16, Solid Waste Collection are hereby meant to be read as follows. Sections 5.16, Act 5.16.01 through eleven? Do I have to read all of those? I guess one is contract, two is definitions, three is removal, four is containers, five is fees, six is extra service, seven is right, eight is unlawful disposal of waste, nine is authority to contract for service, ten is penalty, eleven is recycling. 5.16.01 contract. The City of Heber Springs hereby authorized entering into agreement with further provisions of solid waste disposal services of the Waste Connection Corporation, Arkansas Corporation. Any agreements previously approved by the Mayor and City Council of Heber Springs in existence at the time of this amendment continue to be in full force and effect unless contradicted or voided here and thereafter. B, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to direct and enter and execute such agreement along with any other necessary documents or complicity agreement. 5.1.2 definitions. Residents, a location within the corporate limits of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, serviced by a single water meter by the Heber Springs Municipal Water Works where a single household consisting of one or more persons normally resides. Residents shall not include multifamily residences or, or commercial establishments, multifamily residences. Location within the corporate city limits of Heber Springs, Arkansas, serviced by one or more water meters of the Heber Springs Municipal Water Works where there is more than one household consisting of one or more persons in each household normally resides sharing common wall or roof, terms to not include residences or commercial establishments, commercial establishments. A location within the corporate limits of Heber, City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, serviced by one or more water meters by the, by the Heber Springs Municipal Water Works, no part of which is occupied by the household residence and where any trade, occupation, profession, job, venture or business is conducted. The definition shall not include residences or multifamily residences. Solid waste, number one. Solid waste means all protrusible and non-protrusible, did I say that correctly? Waste in solid or semi-solid form, including but not limited to yard or foot, yard or food waste, waste glass, waste, waste materials, waste plastics, waste pasteboard and other solid or net or semi-solid waste resulting from industrial, commercial, agricultural or, or community activities. Two, provided however that hazardous waste or hazardous material is as presently or hereafter defined by the rules, regulations, orders, statutes and codes of all agencies, departments and branches of the governments of the United States of America and/or the State of Arkansas shall be disposed of in accordance with, within the law and not within the terms of this ordinance. Three, items of solid waste which, which are too large, too heavy, too cumbersome shall not be included in regular commercial or residential pickup services. These items shall include but are not limited to appliances, furniture, batteries, larger heavy scraps of metal, large pieces of waste, pasteboard and construction debris. These items shall be collected and disposed of in accordance with section 5.16.06. Location, a physical place within the corporate limits of the City of Heber Springs where multifamily residence or commercial establishment is located. Applicable law deemed to include all rules, regulations, orders, statutes, codes, ordinances of all agencies, departments and branches of government, United States of America, State of Arkansas, County of Cleveland, City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, which may now or hereafter be in full force and effect. Recycling, recycling means to separate or divert an item from the solid waste stream for the purpose of processing it, causing it to be processed into material product in the product, the production of compost in order to provide for the final disposal of the material in a manner with, other than landfilling or incineration. Garbage bag, durable, watertight plastic bag with wall thickness equal to or greater than one and two tent, one and two slash ten mil polyethylene plastic with a capacity of not less than twenty gallons and not exceeding forty gallons and having a maximum load weight of fifty pounds. Garbage can, a watertight galvanized metal or heavy-duty plastic container of size not less than twenty gallons and not exceeding forty-five gallons, having a maximum load weight of fifty pounds. No more than three containers. Extra containers shall, will be charged as shown on the rate schedule. These containers shall have a handle or handles on the sides, sufficient durability by which it may be lifted, having a tight-fitting metal or plastic top with a handle and being so contracted as to permit the free discharge of its contents. Contents, boxes, trash can holders or other containers designed to store garbage cans will not be put down on the street right away or in front of residential houses. 5.16.03, removal, generally. A, from and after the passage of this ordinance, all solid waste of all residences or all multifamily and commercial establishments within the corporate limits of the City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, shall be collected and disposed of exclusively by sanitation department of the city except as here and provided. Multifamily commercial users shall have the right to collect and dispose of only recycled solid waste by removing or causing the same to be removed from their premises. Residential users needed multifamily commercial users not on no less than a weekly basis. B, all solid storage, all solid waste storage areas and grounds are to be of clean, unlittered condition and all solid waste generated from any, from any properties to be contained as required by this ordinance and other ordinances of the city. C, no person or business shall place their solid waste or commingle their solid waste without another person or business for pickup except as here and provided. A department complex or office, office building housing separate persons or businesses may place their solid waste in one container or containers with a pickup fee to be assessed against and paid for by the owner of the apartments or office building. D, regular curbside pickup, regular curbside pickup service residential users shall be on a once-per-week pickup schedule and for multifamily commercial establishments, pickup service shall be on an as necessary basis. 5.16.04, containers. A, residential pickup shall be made at curbside only in garbage bags as defined herein. Residential users shall be allowed three containers per week. Containers shall be placed at the edge of the user's property joining the street. All solid waste must be bagged and placed inside the trash containers. The containers must be placed no later than seven AM on the scheduled, scheduled route day and should be removed from the street at the end of the day. Sanitation department employees shall not enter houses, buildings, garages, carports or any structure for the purpose of collecting solid waste. B, one point O, multifamily commercial establishment shall be allowed to purchase their own containers commonly referred to as dumpsters from the City of Heber Springs and may rent them from the city on a monthly basis. If a multifamily commercial establishment does not have sufficient amount of monthly waste to satisfy the need for a dumpster, then such multifamily commercial establishment may elect to use, with the permission of the city, the approved containers from residential user and the fee for such service will be based upon volume. B, two, the empty dumpsters must be either on a fixed schedule or on a call, or on, on a call-in basis. It shall be the responsibility of the business owner to ensure that dumpsters are accessible for dumping. C, street-side pens and containers of any form utilizing contained trash cans are restricted and must be approved by the city prior to being utilized by a residential or commercial user. The City Council hereby authorized as the mayor and/or his or, and/or his or her representative to be designated to give such approval for street-side pens or containers on behalf of the city. All street-side containers not approved by the city must be built according to the sanitation department, built, built according to sanitation department specifications or substitute the approval set forth above. 5.16.05, fees. Fees for residential business or commercial customers shall be charged as listed on addendum A in this ordinance. City retains the right to change, modify or increase rates as shown in this amendment without changing the rules and regulations contained in this ordinance. All residential users, monthly fees for curbside pickup shall be billed by the Heber Springs Municipal Water Department. All residential hardship cases, multifamily commercial users should be billed from the City of Heber, Heber Springs City Hall. 5.16.06, extra service. The city may provide pickup service of items of solid waste which are too large, too cumbersome and otherwise included in normal pickup service. These items have been removed at additional fee. Mayor, his or her representative shall make a fee determination on these items, based on these items. A user asking for these items to be picked up shall contact the sanitation department and make an appointment for this service and will identify the type, uh, number of items to be picked up. 5.16.07, right. The City of Heber Springs shall have sole right to provide the service of collecting and disposing household solid waste in the city and to collect a fee from each user for said service. No person, persons or other entity shall have right to collect or dispose of their own solid waste by removing from the city to a lawful land for or authorized, or other authorized disposal site. No person or persons or other entity may collect or dispose of solid waste of another in the city whether or not a fee is collected for doing so and no person, persons or entity shall have to pay for any other person, persons or an entity a fee for the collection of or disposing of their solid waste except for the City of Heber Springs. 5.16.08, unlawful disposal of solid waste. It shall be unlawful to drop, deposit, discard or otherwise dispose of litter upon any public or private property in the city or upon, or into any river, lake, pond or other stream or body water within the state unless. A, one point O, A, point one. The property has been designated by the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality as permitted disposal site. A, two, litters placed into a receptacle intended by the owner or tenant into lawful possession of that property for the deposit of, of litter. If it is deposited in such a manner as to prevent the litter from being carried away or deposited by elements upon any part of private or public property or waters or. A, three, the person is an owner or tenant in lawful possession of the property and the litter remains upon the property and the act does not create a public health or safety hazard, a public nuisance or a fire hazard. B, penalty. Person convicted of violation of 5.16.08 for a first-time offense shall be guilty of an unclassified violation shall be fined the amount of not less than one hundred dollars and not more than one thousand dollars. An additional sentence of not more than eight hours community service may be imposed in addition to the monetary sanctions. Person convicted of subsequent or subsequent violation of the same subject within three years of the first offense shall be guilty of an unclassified misdemeanor and shall be fined an amount of not less than two hundred dollars and not more than two thousand dollars with an additional sentence of not more than twenty hours community service imposed as well. 5.16.09, authority to contract for service. The City Council should be empowered in a sound discretion to contract one or more reliable persons, firms or corporations to gather, transport 5.16.09, authority to contract for service. The City Council should be empowered in sound discretion to contract one or more reliable persons, firms, or corporations to gather, transport, and dispose of solid waste within the city limits to supplement the service as provided by the Heber Springs Sanitation Department. Should the city so determine that contracts and contracts are necessary, they shall be upon the terms and conditions of which shall most benefit the city and its inhabitants in preserving and protecting public health, safety, welfare, including but not limited to the regulation of charges to be levied for such service requiring the use of approved equipment, regulating the frequency and schedule of service, requiring the use of approved equipment or regulating the frequency and schedule of such service in any and other, any, and all other areas of the city requiring such contractor and contracts to perform such service in the same manner required of its own employees, agents, and servants. 5.16.10, penalty. Any person or persons, or entity that shall violate any provisions of this chapter other than 5.16.08 shall be guilty of an unclassified misdemeanor and upon conviction shall be convicted to a fine, or shall be subject to a fine of not less than twenty-five dollars nor more than one hundred dollars. Each occurrence shall constitute separate violation. 5.16.11, recycling. The following items and materials will, depending upon market conditions, be recycled by the city, and all its residential customers may sort and package the following items and materials: aluminum, cardboard, and newspaper. Information with regard to sorting and packaging these items may be decimated from the sanitation department. The mayor is hereby authorized to enter into contract, which shall be approved by the City Council in furtherance of this chapter and the city's desire to engage in recycling certain items. Section two, any ordinance or part of ordinances, or parts of ordinances in conflict here within are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section three, that the provisions of this ordinances are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such an invalidity shall not affect the remainder of the sections, phrases, or provisions. Section four, emergency clause. The need to provide a consistent source of funding for the City of Heber Springs Sanitation Department and the requirement to update fee schedules is to provide for the public peace, health, safety, and welfare, and is deemed by the city to be an emergency, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage.
Thank you.
Does the fee schedule have to be written as well?
Yes.
Did y'all get the updated one?
All right, all right. Residential, three cans, twenty-four dollars per month.
No.
No.
Twenty-five, that's not the updated one.
It's twenty-five.
It's twenty-five.
Louis, do you have the updated one?
It is twenty-five.
Addendum fee schedule, residential three cans, twenty-five dollars per month, commercial can service three cans, twenty-five dollars per month, eight dollars and seventy-five cents for each additional can. Multifamily and commercial dumpsters, two yard at twenty dollars per month, three yard at twenty-five dollars per month, four yard at thirty dollars per month, six yard at forty dollars per month, and eight yard at fifty dollars per month rental. Disposal fee of fifteen dollars per yard container presumed to be full. Class four trash and debris, twenty-eight dollars per yard. Overfilled dumpsters to be additionally charged. Makes class four and one dumpsters twenty-eight dollars per yard. Refundable deposit for dumpster one hundred dollars per yard. Short-term dumpster, twenty-eight dollars per yard plus monthly rental fee, thirty-day window there. Special pickup fees, fee schedule for additional fee, additional pickup items available at public works or the mayor's office. The mayor or his or her representative will make a determination of fees in special cases of construction, remodeling, demolition, et cetera.
Good job, Jim.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You as well.
Should we even put recycling on here? What if they take out something else?
Well, just in case, what if we start doing it?
She's gotta read the title three times, twice.
I mean, I'm just saying, this says that it will, that recycling will be picked up and that these items will, like, is there any reason to even include that?
It's got a phrase, depending upon market conditions.
So, like, if Waste Connections, like they did, says we're not gonna do plastic, then we don't have to change anything?
Because that, they quit doing it, doing it because there's not really a market for it. So... Because if there's not a market for cardboard, or they're gonna charge us for it, then we're gonna have to change it anyway, or do something separate.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, there might be a market for cardboard, they're just not gonna pick it up one day. So, I just didn't know if we even had to include recycling on it.
It's been in there in the past.
Yeah, I don't know if we have to, but I don't think it hurts to leave it in because of the phrase that's included, depending on market conditions.
Well, another reason I'm asking that is because limbs and leaves were included in the past ordinance. And I, that would've been nice if that wasn't included in the past ordinance and that was just a service that we provided. So, if we keep taking things away, but they're still in the ordinance, that, that's why I was asking that.
Well, it can certainly be changed at the council, so.
Absolutely.
So, you're talking five sixteen eleven?
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just didn't think it had to be included in there, because it's not technically part of the price of trash pickup, right?
You're right, yeah. You're right, it doesn't have to be there.
Well, it says will, depending upon market conditions.
In both.
Yeah.
And that's why I left it.
I don't think it locks us into anything, or...
Because our market conditions are, might be different than theirs. If they're making money, but they're charging us for it, then our market conditions are favorable.
The council still has discretion, so it gets discretion.
I'm gonna be placed on the second reading, Todd Lonely?
It'll be fine. I appreciate that. Sanitation ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve.
I need a second.
Whoa, easy.
Whoa.
You gotta vote first. Sorry.
Second.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Sure, yeah.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can I go now?
Yes.
All right, sanitation ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve. An ordinance revising and updating provisions of the Heber Springs Municipal Code Title V, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 5.16, Solid Waste Collection and for Other Purposes.
I'm making a motion to take a third reading.
Todd Lonely?
Todd Lonely, yes.
Second.
Nancy? James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Sanitation ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve. An ordinance revising and updating provisions of the Heber Springs Municipal Code Title V, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 5.16, Solid Waste Collection and for Other Purposes.
I'm gonna, we adopt the emergency clause. Second.
We're gonna adopt the ordinance.
We're gonna adopt the ordinance first.
Okay, we can do that.
So, Louis, you're gonna adopt the, I mean, oh gosh.
I'm gonna adopt the ordinance.
Yeah, then I'll second.
Louis and Adam, sorry.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
I do have one quick question.
Motion carried. Okay, go ahead.
The, the implementation of it, effective now?
Yes.
So, it's December.
Oh.
Has to be at the first of the month.
First of, huh?
Has to be at the first of the month.
First of December. Where do we squeeze that in?
Then, the emergency clause.
Just modify the emergency clause to say that, that the need to provide it, is deemed by the city to be an emergency, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect as of December first, twenty twenty-two.
Go, go ahead, Louis.
Congress chair, I'm gonna be, adopt the emergency clause with the provision of passage from full force and effect on December first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
James Lay?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, next we have our leaf and limb removal, um, com, contract, well, for yard waste, and Gris Ferry Total Property Maintenance is here. If we have any questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for being here and...
It's a big deal to us.
And being very patient.
This is a big deal to us.
Yes.
I hope it is to you too, yeah.
And the residents of Heber.
They've been great, they've been very flexible. I've called a few times. They've been great to work with.
Y'all have your grapple truck already that you're gonna use for that?
Gotta leave, gotta, I got home bar, um, so I'll be, cause through some news, which I understand we're gonna bump it up quicker than January third. We'll go over to the bar and get that thing in my hands.
Evidently, we're getting rid of a good one.
We already did.
It's already gone.
He said he'd deliver, you got a boom truck, same guy going through to get this truck.
Right.
So, I'm just waiting, you know, only thing I'll do.
Will y'all be able to go by December first? Or do you, do you have to have that truck to do?
We've got trucks and trailers, but we have to load everything by hand, and we can do it.
We have a...
Be a lot of work, a lot of calls from out here, and I'm hitting that contract.
You have a leaf vac?
Sorry.
A leaf vac?
We're buying one right now.
Oh, okay.
Are you doing this already somewhere else?
No.
Have you lost your mind?
I love the entrepreneurial spirit.
We appreciate you doing it.
We do, we really, really do. This is huge for us.
So, I did see, do, do people have to call you guys to schedule a pickup, or?
There's, there's a few things we haven't worked out yet. Um, I would imagine with all the, all the resources on the ground now, for the first month and a half, we're gonna be just...
Just down, okay.
Open and get all that out of there, and then, once we run that zone, until we get everything cleaned up, I would imagine we're gonna streamline it rather than just drive around and waste diesel, because that stuff's getting...
True.
But if we could streamline it somehow through your office, where your customer calls in, and maybe we go up to quarter eleven morning, and they call back on one side of town, and so I'm gonna think, report it, we gonna get it. So, that's kind of the way we're looking at it, but we've never done this before. I didn't do a whole lot of detail. I got three hundred and forty-three yards. It's just not a lot of detail. I kinda shot the dark on the whole deal, um, the best I could, so. I'm gonna streamline it the best I can in the cheapest way possible, but right now, I'd say that first month and a half, I would imagine, I'll take four of it, and all day, everything.
Yeah.
And then, uh, to that, maybe we can work together, you know, a better plan.
Yes.
You and I had talked about a letter being mailed out to residents. We're thinking, whatever smart date that is, we need to wait a month, because if you mail that letter out, you're gonna get flooded, and everybody thinks you're more important than the next guy. We, we just need to sneak through that first month and clean out the rest.
Uh, that's fine.
So, that's...
Yeah.
It's fine, Louis.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, no problem.
Of course.
Yes.
The city...
Thank you.
The city, uh, works one area at a time. It's what they've done in the past. Now, you might go to school now, you might talk to the people in the city as far as they work in one area at a time, then they move to the next area, because I got calls, they drove right past my leaves. Well, they were working one part of town. So, anyway, I'll lay that on you, talk to the, yeah, we're, we're, public service, they can probably tell you a little more than I can.
We'll figure it out, you know, as soon as we get things cleaned up.
I'm not too busy with Scott, but they had a map drawn out. They broke into the city of four sections.
Okay. Eric worked here, somebody called, said we didn't do a good job, so, I'm gonna make sure we keep that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
If you're working for the Lord, not for man.
And if there's hiccups along the way, we can always work them out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is new for us too, obviously, so. What do we have to do with this?
You just need a motion to approve the...
I make a motion to approve this agreement for residential yard waste collection.
A second.
Thank you.
A third.
Nancy?
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, next up, we've got the purchase slash lease of the grapple truck. Um, I just wanna be sure that it's okay with everybody on the amount and the direction that we wanna go.
So, one ninety-five is purchasing an outright, like we just...
Correct. And, um, if we finance it through Eagle Bank, it's at four point three two percent. With a payment of eight thousand, six hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents a month for two years? Yes, for a two-year loan.
Interest rates are going up, that's a little high.
Yeah.
The interest rates going up, that's a little high.
Yeah, but it's...
It's...
One ninety-five, five sixty-five.
I think we should've kept the other one. I believe I had that now.
This one won't get used as much.
That's why we didn't need it either.
We need to do a lot of stuff.
And we've got a lot of different bond projects expenses coming up. Be nice to have that cash in the bank, even though it is, that's my view on it, I could be wrong. I'd rather space it out.
Lease it out?
Well, it's not lease, right? I mean, if we're just buying it, it's just getting loaned, right?
Yeah, I just have to call...
What are you, what are you thinking?
I just think with all the expenses we have coming up with all the bond projects and all the other stuff, it might be wise to keep some...
It's okay, you don't need to know that.
You know what I mean? I don't know. Not, not spend a bunch of money.
He's agreeing that, that we should finance it rather than pay it all out at one time, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Definitely.
I mean, I mean, even eight, eighty-six hundred dollars a month's still a stab.
Yeah, well, we just need a, a motion to move forward with the lease.
I make a motion to move forward with the lease for the grapple truck from River City Hydraulics.
Thank you, sir. Hang in a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Should've kept the other one.
Nancy?
Would y'all like to lease a truck from us?
Maybe.
Ninety-five hundred a month.
Scott, when that thing is sitting there, can, we work out a lease to pay this thing off.
Okay, Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
That's what you wanted, right?
Jim Adams?
Just one sec, Scott, is that, that's what you wanted, right? The lease, turn it up? Is that what you wanted, us to lease it, right?
No, I can reject it by, if you're, if you're using it every day, I could say lease it. I mean, I'd be using it five times a month.
But we're not leasing it anyway, we're buying it, right?
We're buying it, it's with a five percent loan.
It should be amended to say purchase financed through Eagle Bank, right?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, I thought it was a purchase.
Yeah, you accidentally said lease.
Okay.
I said lease.
So, we're gonna purchase it and finance it through Eagle Bank?
Right.
Right.
We're gonna purchase it, and, I'm sorry, that was my, my fault.
Okay, good job, Jim. I think we cleared as much.
Screwed everything.
Way to go.
Okay, Ms. Nancy? Well, it's my fault, I said lease.
That might've been me, I don't know, but one of us at least.
I did.
I'm blaming you.
Keep going, I'll take it.
Well, it says it in the paperwork, purchase slash...
We're gonna purchase.
Purchase.
Right, finance through Eagle Bank.
Finance through Eagle Bank.
Correct.
Yes.
At five point three two percent.
Boom.
Not a penny higher.
Eighty-six, oh seven, seventy-seven.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
I guess so.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next up, we had a quick little add-on for the millage. Um, they changed the paperwork this year. I got really confused. Um, because last year we had to sign a certificate. This year there was a rollback, which was very confusing, and Zeke can explain it if y'all need.
I thought I knew till you sent it out and began.
I know, I'm sorry. So, um, we just need to make a motion, decide if we wanna keep it the same or change it. It's at four point eight right now.
So, I thought we said it's four nine, four eight?
Yes.
And we can only go to five?
We can only go to five.
I think we need to say that point two for...
Another time.
When we need it, and because then we'll be done, so.
I agree.
So, I make a motion to keep it at what it is. We'll keep the current millage at four point eight.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Nancy?
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choat?
Yes.
Jim Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, if at all possible, um, we've had a scheduling conflict with the next budget meeting. And Zeke's, so, um, can we pick another day, please?
We had it for the twenty-ninth?
Yes, sir.
Do December first?
What's our deadline to get this approved?
Thirty-first or?
I don't think we have to have it approved till January.
We not do a meeting before this meeting? Or after it?
Yeah. I mean, as long as, yes, we can, but can everybody make it? Because Louis didn't get off work till six.
What day are you guys talking about?
She asked if we could have it, like, before this meeting, before our...